So, alright, cause I'm not gonna be, are you coming in here tomorrow or no?
Yeah.
Alright, cause um...
Oh, tomorrow there's a meeting, I never know when I come.
Tomorrow is the meeting.
Okay, you can come.
The mic sound.
Shut this off. Here, hold on one more.
I do my, uh, okay.
Unless, thank you so much.
It says, I sent it to, uh, study, but they thought she was talking about the course. You know, the website, it says that our, uh, we, so good. Come over, I'll say, I don't wanna sit here, I have my, uh, free.
I think, I do my, uh, okay.
Good evening and welcome to the Lawrence City Council. Today is Wednesday, June 13, 2018. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which has been established, one nation, indivisible, universal, just as for all.
Right, councilors, council president today, to my right, Councilor Large Anna Levy and Councilor District F, Michaela Plant, and myself, Councilor Giovanni Rodriguez, District D. Today we have a couple items on the agenda, but before we go, before we go ahead with the agenda, would like to, can I get a motion to approve minutes from April 10, 2018?
Second.
There is a motion. Motion on the table, properly second. Hold us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Can I get a motion to approve minutes from March 27, 2018?
Second.
Hold us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. And also can I get a motion to approve minutes from April 9, 2018?
Second.
Hold us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We have few items tonight on the agenda, and we're gonna go ahead with the new business. Item 337-16, we have, I got a note from the planning department, so with all this item, can you explain a little bit? We have them McCarthy here from the, from the planning department.
Yep.
So item 337-17, do you guys would like that item to be, what job?
Which case is that?
This is the 65 Ferry Street.
65 Ferry?
Yeah, oh, we're gonna go ahead.
Oh, we're going forward that tonight. We have, we, the applicants here.
I got this note here.
I don't know where that came from, but I don't know.
No problem. So we have item 337-16, this is a surplus property, 65 Ferry Street, tax map, map, 51 lot, 3721, and this is a surplus declaration, surplus declaration. So this went out for request for proposal, and we get a bid of $265,000. This is one out of nine different bids, correct?
That's correct.
And this is the higher bid.
Is what?
This was the, the higher bid.
This was one of the higher bids. We did this as a subjective RFP, with the purpose of this was to sell a, a home to a first-time home buyer who participated in the, in the first-time home buyers program, and to, who come in to develop the property. The asking price was, minimum bid was $201,000. We, the high, the highest bid was $265,000. That was the one that was selected. We had two bids at that, at that, at that level. We chose the application from Domingo Perez and Daphne Batista. They are both here tonight. The, the presentation that was made in their application was very detailed about the work that was gonna be performed. The house was gonna be rehabbed, and the house, they met all the criteria. They are here today.
Can you add a little more?
It was a very strong proposal. Excuse me?
Can you add a little more in terms of what they're gonna do with the property, in terms of repairs and stuff?
What's that?
Can you, can you add a little more in terms of what they're gonna do in terms of improving the property?
Well, they're gonna live in the, in the house.
Okay. So it's a first-time home buyer, homeowner occupied?
First-time home buyers, owner occupied, and as I said, they had a detailed proposal with construction plans, bids, they had all the financial letters that shows.
Essentially, you have two, two bid, $265,000?
Yes.
And you pick one of the hires, one of those two?
The, the other bid at 265.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you pick, this is one of the two that you picked?
This is one of the two.
All right.
This is, this was the highest bid.
Councilors, there is any question about this property? Councilor Plant?
Yeah, typically when we get these things, we get a little more information through you, Mr. Chairman. We usually get a map, we have a Butters. All I'm seeing is a two-pager. I just see the deed, conditions and deed restrictions, and the basic information regarding the property. Is there a building on there right now?
What's that?
Is there a building on there right now?
There is. It's a two-family home.
Thank you.
It's, was taken for tax title program. The, the value of the house was assessed at $250,000, or we, the home didn't need work. We lowered our bid price down to 201,000, and the high bid was 200, as I said, was 265,000.
Just to, just to give a little bit of a back, background information on this property, I don't know, Councilor Plant, if you remember last year that we have the owner coming in front of us. He used, he was supposed to take care of the taxes that he, that he owed, and he didn't comply with that. And that wasn't, Councilor's, my Ortiz, destroyed, and she brought, she brought the person in front of us, and, and he talked to us about maintaining the property. Obviously, that wasn't the case, and the house was foreclosed. But he was living there for, after he was, he got foreclosed. And I definitely agree with Councilor La Plant, there is only a little bit of information, and usually we get, you know, the map lab and all those stuff on the, on the package.
Yeah.
But, yes, there is a building currently in the place.
Excuse me?
There is a current dwelling on the, on the location. There is a current building on the location right now.
Okay.
There is a, there is a building on the location right now.
Yes, yes, it's a two-family home, yes. I don't, the, I've got the full bids and packages here. I don't know if you wanna, if you wanna review those. I brought those, but this is what was submitted, the one page, the information. So it was a two-family home existing.
Do you have any, any other information with you?
I brought, yeah, I brought the bids with me.
Can you pass it over to Councilor La Plant?
This is the submitted proposal.
These are all the proposals? I'm not looking at all the proposals.
Pass it over.
Excuse me, through you, does it say in here how long the city's had ownership of this I'm just curious. Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Does it say on here how long the city has had ownership of this property? Does it, how long does the city have ownership of this property?
Um, I was like, come on? I believe, I believe the city's had ownership for a couple of years, but it was a long, as, as, as Mr. Rodriguez explained, Councilor Rodriguez explained, there's a long history of this, that there was an applicant in there, hadn't paid taxes, we had to go through the housing court, land court, oh, there was a lot of litigation. The city actually gave the prior owner every opportunity to redeem this property and get themselves back into compliance with their taxes, and they never did, so the city ended up having to take this, at a last, as a last, um, as a last ditch effort.
So we have total of nine different bid received on this RFP, right?
Excuse me?
We have problems with audio.
It's, I can't hear out of this here.
All right. We have total of nine different.
Yes.
Bid received on this RFP for a two-home, a two-family home, right?
That's correct.
All right, councilors, this is one of the higher bid.
That's correct.
Received. It was two bid of $265,000.
That's correct.
This is a home, a first-time home buyer, and, and, and the person is gonna be living on the property.
Correct.
I can make a motion to reset this out for the favorable recommendation.
There is a motion on the table?
Second.
Properly second, hold us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. On, second item on the agenda, it's a similar situation. This is 357-16, it's a surplus declaration for 568 Access Street. This is a vacant lot. This is about 2,400 square feet. The assessment value for this property is $5,100, and the sell, the sell value, the sell price for this property same as the assessment value, $5,100. The bid received for this property, two different bids, one at $5,100, and the other one $10,300 for the RFP proposition. So why we didn't get the higher bid on this, on this case?
There, this is actually the property that had the most debate amongst the task force. One of the conditions that was set is, is that the property had to go to a Butter as a highest condition. Both the applicants, in this case, own property on, on both the, the east and west side of this property. The, there was, some arguments were made to give it to the high bidder, who actually owns an existing building. Another argument was made by other members of the board that the, the person who bid $5,100 owns several properties that are, are being developed, and some, several other vacant properties. And his proposal was to merge all those properties to a larger parcel, to do a larger commercial development on Nessick Street, and the board felt that in the long run, that would be a better investment for the city, to have commercial development on that block rather than a parking lot.
Councilor, we just hear the situation. This is a, 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 let's say perhaps another property that they're gonna merge together and make one big lot. There is any comment on this item, councilors?
I do.
Councilor La Plant?
Can you hear me better now? This better?
Yes.
Good. So we've gotten some verbal assurances that they're gonna, that these better is going to make some sort of bigger, kind of merge these, these properties together for a business initiative?
Yes.
So...
That was, that was what stayed in the RFP.
But, but there's, there's no commitment to that. I mean, how do we, I mean, that, that person can write that on a piece of paper, and then they get the property, and the next thing you know, it could be a rooming house or something to that nature over there. How do we have any assurance that what they say they're gonna follow through on?
You're, you're correct. I look at the conditions, and there's nothing in the conditions that would set, there's a timeline for development to be done within 12 months, but there's nothing to, that requires a certain type of development. All we have is what was proposed in the RFP.
Do we have the authority to, to send this back out and amend these deeds and conditions?
Yes.
I think we can take it under consideration, potentially before the next, this goes up to full counsel.
So here's what I'm thinking. You said this is a rather fractured decision, it's a tough one by the real property task force, and that's unusual. So in this case, what seemed to be one of the overriding factors was that the promise of its future, that's what swayed, seeing, listening to your testimony, why this particular applicant received this, or was being advised as being the preferred choice. So my comfort level on this would go up a lot more if I saw something on here that reflected the fact that that's what they're going to be doing. I don't know the details, I'm not sure what kind of timeframe that's reasonable for someone to make this happen, but if that's, if that's an overriding condition of that task force, I should think that it would be part of the, these discussions.
Salama is here today, he's, and...
And that's fine. He may, may tell me he wants to do that, but that's about worth, that's worthless to me.
Maybe that's what, what, what condition he'd be comfortable with.
Okay.
Would you be comfortable with the condition? You got any commercial development?
Absolutely. I've been, I've been...
Okay.
I've been doing...
Yes, yes, your name for the record. Name an address for the record. Name an address for the record.
Yes. Gamal Salama, 2777 Judas Drive, Belmore, New York. I live in New York.
And you, you have a property here, Lawrence?
Absolutely. I, I built two years ago, 525 Essex, which right across street from the lot. We built 24 apartment, and it's doing great today, and I mean, everybody visit there and see how good we, we did. Right in this moment, in Matuna Street, I'm building 28 apartment also. And Roger, I'm in a contract with him, and I'm buying the building also.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Roger? Who's Roger?
Roger, it's the building next in a corner.
The owner of the building right next to the lot.
Roger Farah.
That's the one.
Oh, yes.
Owns several businesses on the same block.
Right, so I'm, I'm buying, I, I buy his property, also buying it right now. We're gonna close maybe next week. We're gonna build about 35 unit over there. My intention for the whole block, the empty lot, to build a supermarket and some business, restaurant, and maybe in the top of it, some floor or two for commercial office, and if it's, we can build in the top of it some apartment also would be great, because the neighborhood will need all of this. We need, you have about almost 280 apartment, and, and 5 Franklin will coming, maybe by the end of one year from now, you're gonna have like 180 apartment. So the neighborhood was whatever I'm building was apartment, and the other people, they need a supermarket, they need some commercial store, maybe a bank, maybe whatever it come.
So, just to, to facilitate this conversation, in, in listening to Mr. Salama speak, so I guess the only condition that I would add on here, and I would defer to you as to how it could be placed in, is to allow all those things to go for, those things like good things, a supermarket and stores of that nature, and just have the deed restriction being no housing units in that, in that, on the property that he owns. If he's fine with that, I'm fine with the sale.
You didn't know apartment in the top of it on the commercial?
That's what I'm saying.
On this lot?
On the lot 24 apartment and 24...
On Essex Street.
On the one you're buying.
The other one I can build in the top of it?
Well, the other, that's a zoning question. I, I don't think that's come before us. The only thing that we're dealing with right now is this one parcel. That's the only thing I could deal with. I can't, I can't reach to those others, 'cause that's not before us, and all I can do is this one property. On this one property.
On this property only?
Now, the zoning issue's a whole different issue, and I may speak out on that, but that's not tonight, and that's not here, so, okay, thank you.
So, the condition that we're talking about is on, on the lot that is located on... on, um, on 568 accessory, there will be a restriction on the title that it says no residential...
No apartment.
No apartments to be built.
It can be offices, it can be, uh, uh, store underneath, no problem, you got it? Absolutely.
Okay, we're good?
That's, that's fine, um, yeah, it's, it's, I mean, it's up to you whether you know, do you wanna send that up, um, or amend that condition before the public hearing, or I bring it back?
Yes, uh, well, we'll do, we send it up to the full council with a favorable recommendation pending, uh, that, um, transcript, that, the transcript of the restriction.
Okay, alright.
If the councilors are comfortable with that.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, so, uh, I'll, I'll make, I'll, I'll make that motion. The motion is to send this up to the full council with favorable recommendation, um, and that pending, pending, of course, having the, um, the deed restrictions be modified to reflect the, um, condition that, that this parcel, uh, will be restricted from use, that it will not have housing on there.
No, no residential development.
No residential, no unit, no housing apartments, any domiciles. So, um, I don't know how long that takes effect, is it a five-year, 10-year, 20-year, I don't know what that is, um, I'm not sure if it's...
I, I think it's the condition we set for this, for the development of property is 12 months.
That's it for this?
Yep, it's be developed within 12 months.
Alright, there is a motion on the table?
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. So next item on the agenda will be, um, item 32417, this is also surplus declaration 19 Main Street. Uh, alright, this is a, um, uh, three son, this is, uh, commer, commercial garages, and the higher bidder was, uh, four thou, $425,000, the assessment value $385,000, and, um, and we actually picked the higher, the higher, uh, the higher offer that we get, right?
That is correct. Um, we had two, two, uh, offers on this case, um, the high bid was $425,000, which was, um, almost, uh, 400, uh, almost $40,000 more than the minimum bid. Um, the, um, RFP submission proposal, though submitted, also had over $600,000 in improvements, uh, for investment of over, over a million dollars in the city. Um, the, the, um, company that was bidding on is FPM, um, it's better known in New England as, as Feeny, um, um, construction, and they are a, a large construction, um, company with, throughout New England, they have offices in a number of areas, and they were looking to establish a presence in the city of, in the, in this greater Lawrence area, as they do a lot of construction here and have to bring their equipment from the great, so this will be their satellite location. Uh, Mr. Michael Sheehan's here, um, to, if he has any questions on the property.
Sure.
But the, um, city, um, uh, a, a number of the people on the task force were very familiar with this company, um, the DPW, they, they do a lot of state work, a lot of, um, highway work, it's, um, uh, as I said, it's, uh, um, the, the plans, um, are to fix up and develop and clean up this property, and, uh, we have a lot of faith in that. The other bid was, um, for just, uh, just over the, um, the, the requested bid, and it was, uh, for a landscaping company, so we thought the, um, the Feeny, um, bid was the, uh, stronger bid.
Uh, so, th, this, uh, this is a, a construction company that is gonna be, having basically the, the storage here.
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be a construction yard office. Um, the property has, um, both warehouses, has repair, um, facilities, and it has office facilities all on the same property. Um, so it's a, and as I said, this is a, a, a well-known legitimate, uh, business that's well-recognized within the, uh, community.
So, you know, construction companies, they, they, they kinda bring a lot of, uh, a lot of materials and a lot of, uh, storage and a lot of stuff to the, to the place, is that gonna be the intention of this?
Well, under our zoning ordinance, there's a limitation to what you can do for storage, we don't permit outdoor storage, so if they're gonna be bringing materials in to be stored, they'll have to be done in the warehouse area, which as I, as I mentioned, I think the warehouse is, um, almost 5,000 square feet and, uh, 30-foot ceilings, so there's plenty of storage indoor, they're gonna have their construction trucks, equipment, things of that nature on the property, um, so, we're confident that by, um, that you just, merely through our zoning ordinance, um, the property will be well-maintained and won't be a, uh, conflict with the existing residential development down there. This is in an, an industrial district, um, it's right on the train tracks, it was a formerly a, um, oil company, delivery service, that, and they had trucks and oil facilities and underground tanks, things of that nature, so the proposal's to clean up, um, anything that needs to be cleaned up, pay, repave the, the surface, and fix the buildings up to, uh, to quality.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so I'm having a hard time hearing as you are, so, what is there right now? Garages?
There is, um, yes, there's a, it's a multi-building facility, there is, um, a large warehouse, there is, uh, a, a repair garage, and there is a large office area and, uh, store in, in, in...
And what's the plan there?
What's that?
What's the plan there? I, I'm sorry, it's residential three, are they gonna be building any residences there?
No. No, it's gonna be all commercial.
Just continue with the commercial.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilors? Any questions for the, uh, for the, our construction company that is here presently? No? Alright, um, just wondering, how big is this company?
How big is property?
Your company.
Um...
He can hear you better.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mike Sheehan, Director of Real Estate, Feeny Brothers Utility Services, 103 Clayton Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts. We presently have, uh, over 900 employees, we're the largest, uh, subcontractor to ever source national grid in Columbia Gas. We presently have two locations here in Lawrence, we rent space at 20 Groton Street, and we rent space on West Street. We see this as a great opportunity for us, uh, as a contractor yard, and just a little of explanation with contractor yards, the drivers will be coming in, seven, six, seven o'clock in the morning, uh, picking up their equipment, uh, piping, things like that, we'll treat, keep as much as we can indoors in the warehouse, and that's the plan. Uh, there, there will be some outdoor storage of crushed stone and things like that when we fill in the pipes, and then they'll be leaving, there'll be just one person on site during the day, when they return in the evening, about four or five o'clock, and then the yard will be, uh, secured.
Okay. So now, again, I, councilors, any questions for the company? Alright, there is a motion on the table?
It's moved.
Thank you.
Uh, there is a motion on the table to send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation? Yes?
So moved.
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
I'd like to make a motion, uh, motion to reconsider my vote on document number, uh, five, 35316.
Uh, what item?
This is the previous one.
353?
35316, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
Uh, motion to reconsider?
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it.
Mr. Pr, uh, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, I, I'd like to make a motion that we send this up with a favorable recommendation, start off with that.
So, with, no condition?
Um, no, I'm gonna make the, my, my concern is with the 12, the 12-month conditions on there, I don't think that's long enough, I didn't have a chance to articulate that, but having, I, no, it's, it's 12 months, that's the amount of time that these conditions was staying to effect, so after this thing takes, sold, 13 months later, if somebody wants to put a housing unit on it, they can, and it just seems to me as though...
I, I, I see where you're going. The condition for the housing, you can make, um, for, for years if you want, I want, the condition, the, the 12-month condition I'm talking about, is they have to begin construction and, um...
So it's two different set of conditions?
... 12 months, they can't, they can't leave it vacant for 12 months, that's, that's the condition.
They can't what, I'm sorry?
They can't leave the property vacant for 12 months.
Okay.
So it's two, two, just to clar, just to clarify, two different set of conditions, the one that you put on is gonna stay on the title.
That was the question that I asked, and, and the, the answer to that was 12 months, and so I, I was very...
It's called all the conditions of, in terms of building the property and, and developing it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this is gonna stay on in perpetuity?
As much as can be, uh, as long as it doesn't violate the rule against perpetuities.
Right, okay.
Yes.
I'd like to withdraw my motion to reconsider at this point.
So, let's continue with the agenda, uh, our next item on the agenda is, uh, 4518, this is a surplus declaration of, uh, 2277 Havil Street, uh, this is also a surplus declaration, five total bidding received for the RFP, um, the bidding were between seven, seven, 17,000 to 25,500, uh, the sell price was the minimum, uh, 17,300, uh, can you explain us why? For this vacant lot? This is a buildable lot, right?
Yes. Okay, this, um, in this case, we had five bids, um, the, well, the first initial, um, uh, we were initially looking at the property for residential development, um, one of the bids came in, though, from an abutting property, uh, landowner, wants to use the, um, property to, um, expand the parking for an existing commercial enterprise they have. Um, I think what convinced the board was, uh, there's an existing, uh, five or six-unit building next door that has no parking, and the, um, abutting property's been allowing them to use this for parking, so they're gonna pave and improve the part of this, and make it increased, um, parking for the Breen Funeral Home, as well as, um, they're gonna be submitting a landscaping plan for the, uh, entire, for the area around Havil Street, um, in the existing corner, um, to upgrade, uh, landscaping, improve the, um, environment down there. Uh, the, when we looked at the residential aspect of it, we were looking towards, as an eye towards, um, some housing that was historical in nature, all the houses on this block are well over 100 years old, Victorian, um, the proposals we were getting were for, were frankly for duplexes with garages under, that was modern developments, and nothing that would seem to fit that nature, so that was, um, another reason why we, we thought that the, uh, Breen Funeral Home, uh, proposal was the best bid.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure, uh, Councilor Levy?
Uh, thank you for coming and be present today, just claiming, uh, regarding, but I have a question, um, and one of the meeting that I have with the owner of the John Breen Funeral, they said if they have the, the lot, they also is gonna let, like, the, the people who live it around just to park in there, like, they were using all, also the parking for the funeral, uh, the people who live in there, but they had those parking right now, it's been closed, anytime that I pass by, nobody can park over there.
Well, uh, the people, the cars were parking on the dirt lot that we own currently, and they're gonna improve that and they're gonna let the cars that park there to continue to park there, but they also allow St. Mary's, um, to use the property for functions and for other events as well, so...
They are not letting nobody to use those parking at this moment, because we had a couple of activity that I designed maybe, and they put some of the cones on there that nobody can use as a parking.
Well, that, uh, I, I do know that was, uh, part of the application, was that, uh, that they allow that, I'm gonna take a look at the conditions. Alright. Do you... Yeah, sure.
So...
Yes, name and address for the record.
I'm Lisa Breen from the John Breen Funeral Home, um, our address is 122 Amesbury Street. Uh, we do put the cones out there periodically, um, when we have wakes, um, and funerals, because people that do park on that lot at 277 Havil Street drive in from that area to park, and we don't want our, our people, our patrons, to get running down or run over, and we need to be cautious of that, um, and that's why we do put the cones out periodically, but most of the time, we do let, uh, St. Anthony's Church use the lot for the Mahadeshan, we let St. Mary's Church and School use the parking lot when they have an overflow at masses, um, we also let, um, the St. Patrick's Day Parade line up there, um, and we're willing to, if we do, um, if we're able to get that lot, we would talk with the neighbors who are parking there now, there's really no off-street parking for anybody, if they were to put a housing there, there'd be no parking for anyone, um, and we would have to put fences up for us to use our own parking lot, so when those people do park in the dirt lot that you, the city owns now, they use our parking lot to get to that spot, so, we're kind of in a dilemma, it's kind of a landlocked situation, um, that they do use our lot already, um, we only put the cones out for safety of our patrons, sometimes we have to, you know, we can't, can't let people drive through when we have a funeral and wakes and stuff like that, so, and sometimes the school buses park in the lot, and that's difficult for us to have people use it when we have funerals, so...
No, I know, and this is understandable, you know, that's, uh, for your safety and for the safety of sometime the community, that you don't want, uh, people to, you know, to trespass, but, uh, on one of the conversations that we had, you said that, you know, people, when they have some activity at the St. Mary's, so they can be used, and so we had a couple of activity for the last few days.
Sure, and you, you feel free to move the cones whenever you need to, you know?
I wouldn't be able to, I don't, I won't do it.
We don't, we don't have a problem with the community, we always have been, you know, easy to work with and all of the above, just, it's hard for when we have funerals and wakes, for, you know, we need the spaces, so...
Okay, so maybe one thing, that maybe what, uh, we can do is just to talk with the priests or the, or the church, that when they have an activity, you know, there will, people looking around for, for parking, that they should be able to move, like, the cone, but as soon as the activity is over, so just to put it back, like you just said, for the safety.
Sure, they do it now anyways, so it's, you know, pretty easygoing to do.
But I don't think so that nobody's gonna be able to move and get, uh...
Yeah, they sometimes come in from the other angle or the other side and, and just come in too, so...
I wanna make sure, like I just said before, like, if you know the people from the community and also from the neighbors, uh, some of those, can we still use in the parking when you don't have any funeral or, or anything, right, in there?
Right, yeah. We're pretty good about communicating, you know, to the churches and whatnot when we have things, it's just, I wish that the churches would tell us too when they have things, so we, we can open the...
Yeah, because now that the gene is reopening again from the St. Mary's, they, they, they start having activities, yeah, then...
So we'll be more cautious with the cones or, you know?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thanks.
Councilors?
Hi.
Is, any comment?
I just wanted to make one quick comment, I wanted to thank you, so, it's just gonna be used for parking, that's pretty much it, right, this is just a parking area.
That's correct.
Just parking.
That's correct.
And I just wanted to make one, one just comment, I, um, been on the council for a number of years, of course, I don't recall, Ms. Breen, you've come before the council in the past, you have, I just don't, my...
For 281 years.
You have for 281? Okay.
And we did assign, uh, this, uh, all that time too.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna comment the fact that, my memory is also lapsing, so, um, I just wanted, just to, this is one of the, um, companies in our city that's been around for some time, it's been over 100 years, and I believe it's the oldest...
Ms. Breen, can you come to the mic?
So, th, this, this company has been in our city now for 150 years continuously, and I believe it's owned by the same family for, for the entire...
Yes, we're fifth generation now.
Fourth generation, and, and that, fifth, my bad, sorry. And, and with that, I just wanted to take a moment just to highlight that, um, not that this is impacting at all, whether or not we should or should not approve this, but when, when a company, um, that has been a, a, um, bedrock of our city is here, in, over five generations and 150 years, I just wanted to call that out as a, a point of pride, and congratulations for, for being a, um, for being a, an important part of our, the fabric of our city, especially in that historical area.
Yeah.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Make a motion... and congratulations for, for being a, um, for being a, an important part of our, the fabric of our city, especially in that historical area.
Yeah.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve, send to favorable counsel for the table recommendation.
There's a motion on the table to send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second.
There is a second. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're gonna be in touch with you, uh, for the next meeting, so most likely this, on the next meetings you're gonna have to be present as well, but we're gonna send correspondence to everybody. All right, our last item for the, for this agenda tonight, uh, for the new business is, um, uh, two more items where can I take, I would like to take it as a package because they are correlated to each other. It's forty-seven eighteen and forty-eight eighteen. It's a surplus declaration for three-eighteen and three-twenty Lowell Street. Can I get a motion to, uh, to, to deal with this as a block?
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we have two lots, uh, one lot and one, um, one waterhouse. Uh, the total, uh, sell price for both of them, they were eighty thousand dollars. The higher bidder is here present today and, uh, it is located on three-eighteen and three-twenty Lowell Street, correct? Couldn't hear me.
So the, the property in question is a, is a warehouse located in a, in a district, residential district off of, um, Lowell Street. Um, it used to be a pine, uh, wood manufacturing company years ago. Um, but in, in the, the manufacturing building has been sold off. This is a warehouse in an office. The city recently acquired the parking lot, which was a separate lot, and that's why it was being sold as two lots. We had disposed of this property several years ago. Um, there was a problem with the title so that the other applicant never closed on the property, so we put it back out to bid. Um, and the high bidder is here today. Um, he, he is a local contractor, uh, has good reputation in the city. Um, he's gonna, um, be, um, maintaining his construction company out of there. Um, the warehouse is large enough to fit several large construction vehicles and then there's a two-story office building attached to the front of it. And I said it now, it, it, the property now has parking for, I believe, about six cars. So, um, we felt that was the best application. We did have a second application, um, that was gonna use it for this warehousing. Um, and we felt that this, um, this proposal was the best. So I have Mr. Luis Tejeda today, here today, who is the principal for, um, Miguelin Contracting. So you can answer any questions, but as I said.
Sure.
I, it just, just as my position as ladies planner, I have a lot of, I've dealt with Mr. Tejeda in the past and I found him always to be a very, uh, hardworking and, uh, and an honest contractor.
Sure. Uh, Miguelin.
My name is Luis Miguel Tejeda and the, are the company of Miguelin Contracting.
Address?
Uh?
Address for the record? Direction? Address for the record? Direction?
Oh, my, my address is, uh, thirty-eight Kendall Street and I have my office on eighty-nine S Street.
So Miguelin, we, this is a very congested area, a lot of cars on that location. So you're planning on parking a lot of vehicles there? Esta es una área muy congestionada. Usted planea tener muchos vehículos estacionados en el área?
No.
Translating for him.
No. Uh, I only had to park in the, in the, in this area probably three or four cars.
Okay. All right, councillors, there is any question for that, uh, for that, for the Miguelin Construction? No? All right, um, this, this was the higher bidder for this proposal, correct?
I believe so. It was, was ten thousand dollars more than the second bidder.
Okay. Councillors, there is any question for either or, for either the planning department or the construction company?
And just through you, it's just for I'm clear, you're gonna continue the use there with, uh, with a warehouse and parking? That's what it's gonna continue to be using? There's not gonna be any new units or housing? You're just gonna continue its use? Am I making sense? What are you gonna be doing with the property? And I'm sorry, I just, I didn't fully understand.
Oh, I, I wanna use the property for a warehouse and an office.
Got it, okay. Good, thank you.
Okay. All right, councillors, there is any motion on the table?
Second.
There is a motion on the table?
Second.
So what's the motion?
Just to send it with the full-
Okay, there is a motion on the table to send it to the full council with a favorable recommendation. That's the motion?
Yep.
That's the motion, I'm second.
All right. Uh, can I get a second?
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Miguelin. This is for both, yes.
For both, for them.
Item forty-seven eighteen and forty-eight eighteen, we, uh, we put it together as a package. All right, councillors, there is any other item that would like to speak today from this agenda? Since there is none, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Second.
All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much.
Abdu and voting member, Brian DePaney, our president, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councillors. Heck of a job last night. We got through the budget and I think we should all be commended for that. And thanks for your diligence in working with us, uh, throughout the entire process. I do have minutes for May twenty-third. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. This is the time of year, councillors, we're, we're doing some, some of this is, is, uh, cleaning up at the end of the year for stuff. Pull out my old, my current budget, if I can find it. Document, uh, number two-sixteen eighteen, Office of Planning and Development. Is anybody here for me? Yes, there is. Planning and Development, uh, authorization to expend a grant from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation for funds for advancing self-organizing teams, otherwise known as FAST, up to six thousand dollars. Good evening.
Good evening. Councillors, my name is Alicia Miller. I am the coordinator for the Mayor's Health Task Force.
Welcome. Just give us an overview of what this money's for.
So as, uh, as a past winner of the Culture of, Robert Wood Johnson Culture of Health Prize, uh, the, the northeast, prize-winning communities do have a spring meeting every year. So that money is towards that spring meeting. We host all the, uh, the meet, the winners from the northeast. So all the winners from the state of New York, Connecticut, um, Massachusetts and New Hampshire. We all have a meeting every year, uh, where we look at trends in public health, ways that we can learn from each other, um, looking at other things that we, we're doing in our communities and how can we learn from what's, what's happening. Uh, this year our, our, um, our meeting was on the impact of community and economic development on health equity within communities. So that money funds the, uh, helps in part to fund the, uh, costs associated with having that meeting.
Okay, I understand. Uh, are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve and send to the full council with a favorable recommendation?
Motion to approve and send to the full council with a favorable recommendation by this committee.
Motion made. Second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll see you, how about next Tuesday?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. So my only, I think my only question for you is, is these totals, not to exceed totals, but for each one of these, is that close to what their current accounts are, or their balances in their accounts?
I can give you the detail for each fund if you'd like.
I don't need a lot of detail, but I do like the bottom line number if you say that.
Sure, I can tell you what the final number was.
Bellevue?
So, for the cemetery... Okay, let's start with the revolving fund.
Whatever's most convenient.
Okay. Council on Aging, their total revenues were $76,000 and their total revenues were $94,000. So they also had a beginning balance from prior year, so the ending balance for the year, it's $120,000.
So, right now, just so I'm clear, in this particular case, they have $120,000. And our order this evening, if adopted by the full Council, will limit them to expenditures of no more, no greater than $100,000, which means at the very least, they'll have a balance at the end of this fiscal year of at least $20,000. Okay, I get it. Right. So, the other ones?
The recreation and park self-supporting service revolving fund does not have a limit on the amount they can raise. So, they had revenues of $40,000, they spent $32,000, they had a carryover balance from last year of $8,000. So their ending balance is $31,553.
Okay.
The Veterans Memorial Stadium, the revenues were $26,999, the expenses were $22,937. Their beginning balance was $22,000 and their ending balance was at the end of the year is $25,333,000. I can forward these to you guys if that would...
And what I, what I don't, what I'm really interested in on the Veterans Stadium, Memorial Stadium, is who is paying that money? Who is, who is contributing? And I don't expect you to have that, but that's what I'm interested in seeing, if you can find that out.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, next?
The library, and if you need more information, Ms. Valentin's here, the Director. So, the library is our newest revolving fund. It was newly established last year, so there's really not much activity going on. They had revenues of $1,400,000, they had no expenses. So they had a beginning balance of $1,363,000, so their ending balance is $2,786,000. And I'll forward these to you.
Okay, great, thank you. And last one is Bellevue.
Oh, the cemetery, yep. The cemetery had additional expenses this year. They actually were in need of two lawn mowers and a mini excavator. So they did go over their allowance, or their limit for the year.
How does that happen if we just authorize a certain limit?
Right, so, if we read the order, it says, "The City of Lawrence hereby authorize the establishment of a revolving fund for the cemetery with annual expenditures under the provisions of $53 and a half." So if I read the $53 and a half from Mass. General Laws... It reads, "Any increased amount of that authorization that is later approved during the fiscal year by the Select Board and Finance Committee and City Council." So they can actually come back to you and say, "We overspent, so we need your approval."
I'm sorry, I laughed out loud. So you can, you can actually expend the money and then come back and say, "Can I have your approval for it?", which seems kind of backwards to me logically.
Well...
And I grant it, a bunch of legislators decided this is a good law. I get that.
Right.
We don't know what they were thinking when they wrote this years ago, hopefully, not recently.
Right. Keep in mind that they did have additional expenses. I think at one point, each revolving fund manager needs to come up before the City Council and say, "Our expenses need to be increased," if it needed to be, because the cap on it can be revisited per each department.
I'm just, I'm just a bit stunned. This is nothing, this is not the caper of the century by any stretch of the imagination, but it just seems like a very... Has Council, has Council in our city weighed in on that interpretation of that law?
I'm not sure.
It just defies logic, is all I'm suggesting to you. I mean, we do certain things like this in the Council and then become the common practice, and I understand that, doesn't make it any more easy to deal with. It just strikes me as particularly odd that somebody can overspend something and then come back and ask for permission. So what happens if the Council says, "No, we don't give you permission to do this"? Then what happens? The money's already been spent, right? So it's kind of a, it's kind of a ridiculous proposition and a process. It just doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense. Unless there was an emergency order attached to it, you might be able to make an argument there. I just, am I way off base on this? Mr. Abdu?
Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, no. It has me begging the question, then why do we approve these in the first place? If we, essentially by us affirming this by a vote this evening and by the full Council, you know, this order says not to exceed X amount of dollars depending on the entity, but if they can just go ahead and do that and then come to us afterwards and say, "Mea culpa", then really, there's no need for us to authorize. I mean, I'm being facetious, and again, it's not your fault, but certainly it's something we need to look into. What good is our authorization if you can overspend and just ask for mom and dad's forgiveness afterwards?
So, where do we take it from here? So, I, for one, don't have a problem with authorizing these. These are good organizations that find money outside of the general fund to be able to pay for things. This is all good, right? So, in essence, this is not a bad thing, but, but there's a reason why somebody decided that there's a need to have Council authorizations to have a limit to expenditures. I mean, I guess I can rack my brain as to why that is. Maybe it's because it's still a city function, it's the city agencies that are spending the money, and we should know as the Council, legislative body, that where this money is being spent like any other budget item. I guess that's the reason, as I'm thinking out loud, as to why we have this authority. But the Vice Chair makes a very good point. It's almost like a sham, why we're dealing with this. So, I, I would love to ask our legal department, as limited as that department is at this point, we have like one and a half people working there, right? So, I just, any suggestions? Do we want to get an answer to this? Do we just want to let it go? Mr. Abdu?
So, Mr. Chair, you know, following up on your point, I mean, the organizations that were debating this evening are, you know, they're our, they're our social and our people end of the business, right? I'm just, you know, the question, the further questions I would have is, if indeed $85,000 is not enough at Bellevue, then the next time these come before us, maybe it should be a higher number. You know, if it's not enough to do business, let's increase the number so that it's not, to use your word, a sham of a process. And I know I, for one, need to better understand the revolving funds and their, their pass through the City Council authorization.
I do have to say that the cemetery has been abiding by that $85,000 for as long as I could see. This year, they did have an emergency for the mini excavator, and that's what threw them off. They did have money in their budget from prior year carrying forward, and they didn't have the money in the operating budget for the excavator. So, they kind of built up their revenues for the last few years, and they were able to use it to buy this expensive equipment, which was about $50,000.
So, Mr. Abdu, I have a question, and I'm going to ask you what those numbers are. Mr. Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, to go down this path a little further then, so Bellevue is different than the Council on Aging and the library, well, maybe not the library, because it's got its own board, its own revenue streams, and so it's a little, it's in a little better position than a straight city department such as Aging and others. So they have their own governance, which makes a determination, I assume, on certain expenditures. To that end, can you explain to us what governance, what the Bellevue governance determines, what the city determines, is it DPW? Is it Macai Nello? Is it the mayor? As to what is a critical need, what money needs to be spent on it, and what the source of money is? Is it the revolving fund? Is it the, is it the budget we just approved last night? Is it from their own resources, their own account? And I would just close with, I get it. We've all seen the 170-year-old cemetery. The trees are old, the nature of the, being a hilltop is difficult terrain, and the amount of trees lost and damaged on this past winter. I'm sure they've probably gone through a lot of equipment, and they've probably gone through a lot of man-hours. So, I can appreciate and empathize with that. I just need to better understand, I suppose, the finances of the cemetery, since I've always understood to be semi-autonomous. But then, we're here approving these expenses.
Well, the budget for the cemetery for 2018 was $390,000, and $311,000 was mainly salaries and personal services expenses. So they did not have much in their operating budget to buy expensive equipment that they needed for their upkeep of the cemetery. So that when they did come to us looking for the money, they didn't have it in the operating fund. So, they did have the money in the revolving fund, and that's what they used to buy the equipment.
And, but wouldn't the equipment also be on the SIP, so there was nothing programmed in last year's capital improvement plan for placement of vehicles? For instance, the DPW, they, that didn't...
It wasn't part of the CIP, no.
It was not, okay. Thank you. I appreciate you bearing with me on that. I know there's a lot there, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So what are the numbers then on the cemetery?
So their revenues for container sales was $45,940. What was spent was $103,593. Now, they had a beginning balance at the beginning of the year of $77,000, and then their ending balance was $18,816.
Is that the only account there? So their container account is their only account that's under the revolving fund?
That's correct.
Okay.
They do have a trust fund.
I knew there was more than one.
Yeah, they have a non-expendable trust fund, which is a perpetual care fund. That one has a significant amount of money.
But you can't use that to buy capitals, capitals actually.
Not the non-expendable, but they can use the interest generated from that account.
That's right. For, for capital expenditures if they chose to?
Yes, for whatever they need to use for the upkeep of the cemetery.
I'm not going to micromanage the cemetery because that's a whole cluster, but, good, so 18Ks in the account right now. So wouldn't that, Mr., the Vice Chair suggested, which makes perfect sense, if, if they, well, they raised, how much money last year? 45K?
45.
So they're not going to be able to exceed, if they raise the same amount next year, there's probably, they're going to be at 63K at the end of the year.
Right, so that's $77,000 that they had at the beginning of the year, it's a cumulative of many years of saving that they have there.
So we don't need to go beyond the 85, they don't even have a 85.
Which they haven't really been, correct.
That was, that was an anomaly, and what it should have happened, so playing Monday morning quarterbacks, what should have happened is last year, that number should have increased. I don't think anybody would have balked at it if someone said $100,000 or $105,000, which would have covered that thing.
Right.
It would have been plenty. Okay, got it, and I understand. I just have one question for the library, if you don't mind.
Sure.
It's a very self-serving question, so I hope you all will beg your indulgence.
You need to pay a late book fee?
Well, there's that, but I didn't want to bring that up publicly. Good evening. You can bring that down if you want. So, the monies that are, this is the friends at the library, is that who's running the...
The revolving account?
No, yeah, no?
No, the friends have their own account.
Got it. Is there any money, is this, is this or any other money being used for any microfiche machines?
No.
No. So where's that money coming from?
Grants, so the White Fund and the McCarthy Trust.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Good night. Self-serving. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to send to the full Council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made, and seconded, all in favor say aye. The ayes have it, thank you. Is there anything else you want to take out of order here? Or is that it? Okay, we go back? Oh. Why don't we do this? We got some other folks here. We'll just get them out. We're going to get some other folks out, if that's all right. I know that there are 22718 folks are here. Is there, Mr. Chalice and Mr. Hackus, are you here for, is no one standing?
Yes.
And, are you here for anything specifically? Yeah?
Oh, for the tax...
Is that the only account there? So, their container account is their only account that's under revolving fund?
That's correct.
Okay.
They do have a trust fund.
I knew there was more than one.
Yeah, they have a non expendable trust fund, trust fund, which is a perpetual care fund. That one has a significant amount of money.
But you can't use that to buy capitals, capitals actually?
Not the non expendable, but they can use the interest generated from that account.
That's right. For capital expenditures if they chose to?
Yes, for whatever they need to use for the upkeep of the cemetery.
I'm not going to micromanage the cemetery because that's a whole cluster. But, good. So, eighteen Ks in the account right now. So, wouldn't that, Mr., the vice chair suggested, which makes perfect sense, if they, well, they raised how much money last year? Forty-five K?
Forty-five.
So, they're not going to be able to exceed, if they raise the same amount next year, there's probably, they're going to be at sixty-three K at the end of the year.
Right. So, that's seventy-seven thousand that they had at the beginning of the year is cumulative of many years of saving that they have there.
So, we don't need to go beyond the eighty-five? They don't even have eighty-five?
Which they haven't really been, correct.
That was an anomaly and what it should have happened, so playing Monday morning quarterbacks, what should have happened is last year, that number should have increased. I don't think anybody would have balked at it. If someone said a hundred thousand or a hundred and five thousand, which would have covered that thing.
Right.
It would have been plenty. Okay. Got it. And I understand. I just have one question for the library, if you don't mind?
Sure.
It's a very self-serving question, so I hope you all will beg your indulgence.
You need to pay a late book fee?
Well, there's that, but I didn't want to bring that up publicly. Good evening. You can bring that down if you want. So, the monies that are, this is the friends at the library, is that who's running the?
The revolving account?
No, yeah, no?
No, the friends have their own account.
Got it. Is there any money, is this or any other money being used for any microfiche machines?
No.
No. So, where's that money coming from?
Grants. So, the White Fund and the McCarthy Trust.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Good night. Self-serving. Are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion to send to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. Is there anything else you want to take out of order here? Or is that it? Okay. We go back? Oh, why don't we do this? We got some other folks here. We'll just get them out. We're going to get some other folks out, if that's all right. I know that there, two twenty-seven eighteen folks are here. Is there, Mr. Chalas and Mr. Hackus, are you here for, is no one standing?
Yes.
And are you here for anything specifically? Yeah?
No, I'm just here for the tax.
Oh, for the tax question, right.
She's just here for moral support now.
How's that working for you? Is somebody behind the curtain?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to take two twenty-seven eighteen out of order.
Perfect. Thank you. So, motion made?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. That's the last, Mr. Ayala? Miss?
Skalski.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. My name is April Skalski.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm here from Lawrence Family Development on agenda item twenty-two, twenty-seven, eighteen. I'm very sorry, my throat is very scratching. This is a request for a transfer from the free cash from the city of Lawrence to Lawrence Family Development for the Lawrence gang violence prevention program.
Is Mr., I hate to talk to you because you sound like you're awful. Can Mr. Ayala ask some questions regarding the operations? Would that be okay or do you want to rather ask those kinds of questions?
Ms. Ayala?
Mark?
I can go, Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for filling in. So, one hundred and twenty-three grants, a lot of money.
I'll do my best answer to the program question.
Sure. So, what's this money going to be spent for?
The mayor initiated this last year. What it was, was to extend the gang prevention initiative currently funded under SSYI, but it's very limited under SSYI with that state grant. It can only serve seventeen to twenty-four-year-olds. There is a group that's very important in the gang issues that we can't serve under that grant. Can't provide them any services, no training, no schooling. What that does is extend their ability to provide those services to those that may not fit the criteria of SSYI and also supplements that work. It's an additional three street workers, which the mayor was a big supporter of initially and he still is, obviously. Their work is invaluable. What they do with the youth that are in this grant and even outside of it by the supplemental budget is just, you know, get them engaged in education, whatever it is they need to just steer them away from that gang activity, as you know, is an issue within our city limits. Department just created a gang unit, you know, that's something that's, that shows that we have a need for it, sir.
So, my question is, is one hundred and twenty-three, it sounds like a lot of money and I just, I mean, what is that, what is that getting us?
So, it's going to have a dis-
So, speaking for April, how they break it down over at Family Development, is the street workers, the three additional bodies, so their salaries total forty-four thousand two hundred dollars and that's including the fringe benefits and supplies for those street workers and that's over a twelve-month period. Pop-up tent parties, which again was an initiative, something the mayor requested, having these hotspot areas, so any areas that the police department would deem as a hotspot area where crimes increase, gang activity has increased, they go in with the street workers, with the CSU team, SSYI team, put up pop-up tents. I think you visited the one in South Combe last year.
We did, at the O'Connell Park, yes.
Yes. So, again, that's going to be four parties this year, this summer. Employment, that's for youth, I guess, right?
Yes.
So, there's ten thousand dollars allocated for employment for the youth that they do get into the program, the supplement, with the supplement. Equipment and supplies, a total of five thousand and indirect cost and management fee of eight thousand.
What I would like, it may not be a presentable thing now, but I could see councilors asking questions because this is a significant sum. Can you submit that, if you can't do it tonight, later to us?
I think there was a proposal that was sent to you.
It's the same one, I believe Amanda.
That Amanda Wall sent to you.
You didn't have time to go through it, you said?
That's the one.
That's the one.
So, that has all the information that we're going to throw to you.
That's the one? Okay. Thank you. All right. So, I think we're set then on that. Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Abdi?
Just want to make a general comment. I will certainly be supporting this this evening and I want to recognize Ms. Skalski because I knew nothing about this, CSU or anything, until probably last June, when I got her email and then a very tenacious follow-up email and tenacious phone call to come down to the old Lawrence Plate and Glass and visit the, what would become the now home. And I didn't make the grand opening, but I understand that the results were stunning, that the facility is fully operational.
Fully operational and we're currently still building out. So, we're in the process now of building out a full commercial kitchen so that we can start a micro enterprise with a commercial kitchen.
So, I was going to try and have you not speak. I was going to do all the talking, give you all the accolades and then say, thank you, Mr. Chair. But thank you for that. I do look forward to getting back there and seeing what the finished product looks like. And I see you've partnered, because last summer, I don't think you had a police liaison yet and if, obviously Ayala is such a person, you're in good shape, in good hands. So.
We've done a lot of good work with Officer Ayala as well as the other police in the city. We have a crisis response team that we're developing and we're also coordinating the pop-up parties with community policing.
Yeah, the community engagements that the chief initiated. So, we're kind of going to time it with that as far as, you know, those same neighborhoods where we hand out the information, numbers and we go knock on doors, invite them to these local pop-up tent parties.
And I remember Ms. Skalski talking about this last summer, which I think was a different pot of money, or it was money that we had approved last summer that's different than this, correct?
Yeah, it was, I think it was all included. However, it was tied in, it was all together with the extra open gyms at SLE that you were part of.
Okay, that is correct. Thank you. You were here for that. I remember that. So, again, not tonight. Look forward to getting the update. Congratulations on the opening. This is good stuff. We need it. We know that bad things happen everywhere in the world, but I'm glad to see we're addressing, you know, gangs and preventing these type of activities. So, thank you. Hope you feel better, Officer. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Officer. Any other questions? How about a comment? How about a motion?
Make a motion to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Can we please come, please get your voice back on Tuesday?
I will.
Thank you and we'll see you then.
Thank you so much. Good night.
Anything else you want to take out of order here?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to take item number two twenty-three eighteen out of order.
Anything but two twenty-three, is that what you said, Mr. Abdi?
Everything but two twenty-three eighteen.
Motion to take two twenty-three out of order. It's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Did we get snow this winter, Mr. Chairman?
I don't recall us getting snow.
Why do we even talk about this?
I don't know. Could you refresh our memories, Mr. Hackus?
I will start at the beginning, councilors. So, we had approximately about fifteen different snowfall events during the entire season, twenty seventeen, twenty-eight season, which totaled to about seventy-nine point inches of snowfall total. Obviously, this doesn't tell the full story of the snow, of the winter season that we had this year, which had four very devastating tree events, which, for lack of a better term, is actually an item, a secondary item that's before you tonight to just deal with trees. In total, the department responded to about fifty-two different events during the entire season. This runs the gamut from obviously the elephant in the room, which is the total snowfall events, but also events such as black ice, blast freezes, pushback snow removal, some tree events, you name it. You know, that two million dollar amount, which is the amount in front of you for the actual total contractor costs, is what pretty much amounted to approximately sixteen thousand contractors hour logged through the entire season. Just for comparison purposes, if you look at the overtime cost, you're talking about two hundred thousand dollars. So, when people question, why is it at a large amount, you can pretty much say, with our ten or twelve pieces of equipment on average that we have in any given storm, we can pay internally about two hundred thousand dollars. To a factor of ten is what we need with the contractors for, since it's a supplement, us on larger storms such as the Bombo Genesis that we had this past year. On average, from any given storm, depending on the size of magnitude, we have anywhere between seventy to a hundred pieces of equipment citywide, operating at the same time. Obviously, that varies throughout the storm, depending on the intensity at any point in time, any surprises that you may have or whatnot. Just for one simple example, the storm of, wasn't March?
Was it September fifth?
No, that wasn't the one.
March eighth, March seventh. We approximately had only about eleven point, eleven inches of snow for that storm. Not a big storm for snow for purposes, but the type of snow that we got during that event, very wet and heavy snow, which in turn caused for us to have about two hundred and fifty-one work orders, of tree-related work orders, just during that storm event. So, snow doesn't tell the entire story when it comes to, you know, the three point four millions that it has in front of you. There's multiple things that went into that this year, not the least of them that were trees and the other one is the type of, the snow events that we had during the year. In addition to all that that you see in front of you, we did have to respond to about five different events of sidewalk snow removal throughout the city, which is not simply that we've typically done in the past, but given the thing level complaints that were received in the mayor's office and through constituents and social media about issues of accessibility of the snow on the sidewalks, have a couple of days that school had to be counseled, not because of the streets, but because of the sidewalk was not cleared. So, we were forced to respond in about five different events to be able to clear the snow from the sidewalks from about a hundred and forty feet in every single direction, every single school in the city, which totaled about sixteen of them. Each one of those events, just in contractor cost, was about between twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars, not including the salt cost, fuel cost and personal overtime that you had. So, again, just the total snowfall amounts doesn't tell the whole story of the season, but it requires a broader scope of all the types of events that we had to respond during the snow and ice event or the snow and ice season for twenty seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. And overall, March was probably the accounted for about more than fifty percent of the total snowfall the entire season. In February two thousand and seventeen, we had about twelve point one inches of snow. January, we had eighteen point four. February was eleven point four, but in March alone, we had thirty-seven point nine inches of snow, which I haven't looked at the record books, but it's probably in the top three most snowiest, snowiest March on records. So, for a total of seventy-nine point inches of snow during the total season, pretty much gives you a broader idea of all the events that we had to deal with during this snow and ice season. So, I can continue going into further details if you'd like me to, but at this point, I can open the floor to any questions that you may have more specifically.
Thank you. So, I'll start off with a couple of questions. The sidewalks, a hundred and forty feet each way, are those in front of private residences or is it all?
Yes. So, the schools are responsible for clearing the snow within their property limits. So, directly in front, directly adjacent, but obviously, when, you know, when school children are trying to access it, they just don't access in front of the school. They have to traverse through public sidewalks that are in front of private property. So, those specific areas is the one that I'm referring to when I'm talking about a hundred and forty. And that's a hundred and forty feet is on average. I mean, we typically look at about a city block in each direction, which is what, about on average is what it is. But, you know, having a bucko over there or a bobcat remove, we just simply weren't pushing this now out of the way because obviously we were not going to throw it back on the street. We actually had to remove all the snow from the street and from the sidewalk to make sure that everybody had a clear path of travel. So, that was some additional operations that we had to incur this year. Obviously, it's not something that we want to look forward doing every year because it has real costs associated to it, but, you know, it does put in the department in a position of, yes, we have cleared the streets, we, you know, now that we need to add another service on top of that and also cleared all the sidewalks.
So, there's a good reason why there's, elections don't take place in the wintertime because none of us would get elected if there was an election in the wintertime because the snow, being what it is, is always out there and it's never, ever, it's rarely done to the satisfaction of the constituents, although this year I was told by some that there was fewer complaints, but, so maybe this would have been an anomaly this year. What do we, my big question is, what are we doing to try to save money on, on snow? Are we giving any thought, number one, and number two, maybe related and I'll stop with my questions, is on the sidewalks are a huge, getting the sidewalks done by our residents, it's, residents don't think it's their obligation. We're losing the information war on whose responsibility it is to do the sidewalks because we're either we're not enforcing it or we're sometimes, or we're just losing that battle and kids are walking, residents are walking out in the streets because we're not enforcing, we're not doing whatever. So, just a general comment about that, since you're kind of like the face of the snow removal operations, I just wanted to get your thoughts. So, how can we save money? Thoughts on sidewalk and how can we be better at doing that as a city?
I think, you know, personally, I believe that just looking at the totals of we had to spend just on the sidewalk snow removal, you're talking about probably five to seven percent of the entitled snowfall, snow removal costs in the total, so there you see an immediate opportunity for saving that. But, you know, is enforcement going to be there? I don't know. I can't answer that question. Is somebody going to be out there every single time after you get twelve inches, eighteen inches, twenty-four point six inches of snow to enforce?
Who does that, by the way? Is that ISD?
I believe so. I'm really, I'm not really sure which department is responsible for enforcing that, but I believe it is the inspection services department. So, that is one clear way of saving. I mean, obviously, if we're not looked upon to be able to remove the snow, that is an immediate cost that doesn't have to be logged into the snow and ice budget. One of the things that is always more of a judgment call, and I will use a prime example of the storm of January, of January fourth, had about fourteen point five inches of snow during that storm. Not terribly huge by comparisons of what we had through the season, but being so early in the season, you kind of make a judgment call. Do you leave the snow where it is expecting that you're going to get sixty, seventy degree days and kind of let mother nature take its course? Or do you actively and aggressively go after it, taking into account that you may get another two feet of snow next week? And when you're talking two feet on top of another foot that fell, now you're talking about removing total three feet of snow, which just incrementally adds to the cost. So, at that point, we made a judgment call. It's like we need to be clearing the snow right now because if we get another storm of this magnitude, the level of complaints that my department was going to get was going to go through the roof. Most of the complaints that we get to the post-storm events, it's not due to the quality of the plowing or the cleanup of the streets, but usually has to do with, unfortunately, people clearing their vehicles and throwing the snow back onto the street or sleeping snowdrifts and snow piles that are too high to be able to manage. And you have visibility issues in a lot of different corners in the city and not the least of all, parking concerns as well. Now, instead of encroaching one foot in each direction, you're talking about two to four feet. So, that narrows your path of travel. Now, you have kids and vehicles traveling in the same path of travel. So, you make a judgment call, let's remove the snow. So, that storm alone with snow removal cost accounted with everything, snow and ice, salt and fuel, about, close to between four hundred thousand to half a million dollars just in that snow event because we made the call that we wanted to remove the snow of the streets in those days. And what happened after that, we got two seventy-degree days and during February, and we got one of the mildest February on record. And then you go back on March, you got one of the snowiest March on record. So, it really is a judgment call and we very judiciously try to balance both, obviously, the public dollars, but at the same time, public safety. And it is a very tough call to make sometimes and we look at that very closely every year. In February, we barely did almost any snow removal because obviously there wasn't the need to. At the end of March, we figured April's just around the corner, just as mother nature take its course and we just let it melt all the way. So, those kind of instances is obviously where you see a prime opportunity to try to make, to try to save the money with reducing the amount of snow removal that we have to do post-storm. But again, it is a very much of a judgment call, trying to decide what mother nature's going to do next week.
Got it. Questions? Mr. Abdi or any Mr. Abdi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Hackus, for the explanation of sand and salt, we got very close this winter because of that sand and salt and the need to communicate regarding, my district at least, and I just want to, just like I did the last item, just give an accolade. I think you did a very good, on behalf of your department, you did a very good job this winter under adverse circumstances. I want to cite in particular where I had a path, you know, I have sidewalks to the Frost School and the DPW responded. I had Inman and Groton Street at its intersections with Brookfield and these are paths that children walk to the Frost School and I have multiple small business owners along that way and these small business owners are getting crushed by loss of business due to snow and the streets, Inman and Groton in particular, very narrow. In the middle of the night, your men came and women, men and women came and opened those streets up. The berms were extremely high and parking was non-existent for the small businesses and these kids, though I think they had a couple of those days off, would have otherwise had to walk in the streets. I just want to close- would have otherwise had to walk in the streets. I just want to close by basically encapsulating all that, say, this was um above and beyond, I thought. Um, I had heard from constituents, and frankly, the response was quick. Um, I, I did actually get a response from two of the small business owners who are very thankful. So, you know, oftentimes, you guys get a lot of grief. I just want to let you know that um, this three point four million dollars, at least in this one little example, was put to good, good use. A, hopefully, keeping these small business owners in business a little while longer, right? And they're all, they're still there, so yes. And keeping the kids on the sidewalks. So, three point four million well spent, I thought. I stayed ahead of these storms with the salt and sand, salt, and um, uh, I just want to put that out there and say thank you. And um, one, I do actually, I want, I do want to ask a question. Last night, this city council approved three more building inspectors that can also do code inspection. Would they be multipliers next winter to help with the sidewalk clearing? Would they be the ones that would go visit homeowners and say, you need to get these sidewalks cleared, or cite them?
I, I would assume so, councillor. I do not dare to answer the question. Obviously, I, I cannot speak for the inspection services department, but I would assume that these code inspectors would be out there ideally, um, enforcing the sidewalk snow removal ordinance that we have in the city to ensure that the sidewalks in front of businesses, or at the very least, um, near and two from the schools, um, are cleared with a very minimum of twenty-four hours. I think you see the very real impact in the fact that not only are, you know, the kids are losing not only one day of school, but also two days of school, and I think, I remember the tweet from uh, um Superintendent Riley at the time saying, "The street looks great, but the sidewalks aren't clear. We have to close school another day." So, I think if you want to measure by impact, what type of effect that particular um action is having, not only on a budget perspective, but also on the school side, you can point to that very specific item. Listen, you're losing at least an additional extra day per year, the schools are, for lack of sidewalks snow removal, and it has a direct impact on the DPW's operating personnel signing to a tune of twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per event.
Well, hopefully, these new inspectors next winter will be helpful to the city to mobilize, to encourage people, or cite people for not following the ordinances. Um, the DPW's got a lot to do during snowstorms, and the sidewalks are our responsibility. And um, with that, I would just want to close by saying, um, good use of the word bombogenesis. That's probably the first time it's been used in these halit halls.
I think next time a DPW director uh search is done, should include weather man as part of the qualifications on it because, believe me, um, probably spend a good deal of time in the wintertime just looking at the weather reports and try to anticipate what the mother nature's gonna do for the next week, so.
Well, that'll be another thirty-five years, so we won't have to worry about the next search. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I rest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DePena.
Yes, thank you. Uh, DPW Director Hackus. Uh, how many block have you, the department, have right now for clean the snow sidewalk?
Two.
Only two? Then enough. So, it's, it's nothing.
No, and, and councillor DePena may add to that. Just, again, going back to the point of comparison, um, you look at the overtime budget comparing to three point four million dollars that we spend, looking only two hundred thousand dollars, and that's with all of our active workforces working in most of the storms. Looking at how much we spend in contractor costs, looking at two million dollars a lot, it's a factor of ten. So, you know, how do you maximize and multiply that four so you can get the biggest impact with the less amount of financial impact to the budget?
Okay, uh, last Wednesday, winter, uh, how many, how many street, your department cleaned the sidewalk? Only for the school, or?
We focus, we focus primarily on the schools, but we also focus in around City Hall, around the parks, and a good section of Essex Street as well. Obviously, those commercial districts, we also try to focus in those areas as well, um, since it generates a significant amount of foot traffic during the weekday.
Uh, you have any plan for, and in the future, by a couple more, uh, a block cut, or that's you think that too?
We do. Um, you know, unfortunately, it also comes down to having the equipment, but also having the operator. Um, so usually, those things should ideally would go together. So, always, we always appreciate new and better equipment, but um, unfortunately, if we don't have the bodies to fill it, um, you know, it wouldn't be uh money very well spent.
Yeah, I understand, uh, clean, the clean sidewalk in the city is a business owner and uh, on a property responsibility. But I see when I come, when I visited Meto and Broadway, uh, Lawrence Street, downtown, the, the city clean the sidewalk. I understand it's a series. Uh, it's not a responsibility to the city, maybe in Lawrence, I don't know if in Meto, but uh, it's not easy, you know, when, when you clean the sidewalk in your business, uh, maybe you close the side, your business six o'clock. In my case, it's open twenty-four hour. My employee keep the night, the whole night, continue clean the, the sidewalk. But it's not easy, you, when, when the business close six o'clock, or maybe seven o'clock in the night, and next day, the snow, every snow is on the top to the, to the sidewalk again, you know, maybe first, uh, maybe, you know, it's a good idea, uh, clean a Broadway and answers, because a lot of people walking in the, in the sidewalk. Maybe in my neighborhood, it's not necessary, or not a different neighborhood, but uh, maybe it's a Broadway, a Lawrence Street, Haver. I think in the future, if you put in the plans, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, we, I, I, I don't think we are certainly against um that idea, not necessarily. Uh, as you know, you know, it just has a direct impact on the budget. Uh, we want to provide as much service as the community requires, or the community needs. That's what my department is there for, is a service department. Uh, that's the bottom line of, of what we provide to the citizens of the city of Lawrence. It just is, again, is everything, it just has a direct impact on the budget, and, you know, how much more, you know, is that number of going to go up from three point four? That's just what, the bottom line just comes to that. How much more do we need to do on that?
But, uh, anyway, let me say congratulations. Uh, you have only a couple of year in the, in the city, and your department make a great job. I'm very happy. You know, receive a complaint, good complaint about your job, you know, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. I just want to recognize our streets foreman, Joel Chalas, is here as well. I don't think a lot of the success wouldn't be able uh with him, and then with our streets and parks supervisor, Lance Hamel, who is not here. They are the people that are there and run pretty much the operation on a day-to-day basis. So, much of the success was due to him and his team that works there very hard.
Yes, uh, I have a proof. When I call him, uh, or any person in the department, I receive uh, help quickly. And I want to say thank you, Mr. Chala. Thank you, because you support uh this resident. When you support any call, you support a citizen resident. Thank you, Chala.
Very good. All right. Any further motion?
Motion to send item two twenty-three eighteen to the full council with favorable recommendation.
Motion made.
Second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Are you here for any, anything else?
Yeah, I think I have another.
Mr. Chairman, motion to take item number two twenty-two eighteen out of order?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So, um, those two items, if you remember, um, I think they were both combined into the particular item. However, they represent two different emergency request authorizations that I came before the city council, um, this present council, and I think also the previous council. Uh, one of them was an emergency authorization that was requested, I think, around December of two thousand seventeen. I cannot remember the specific date, but essentially...
June.
Yeah, uh, December fifth, two thousand seventeen, and January sixteen, twenty eighteen, two different emergency authorization for deficit spending that we came before city council. The first one um had to do with uh the obvious October storm that we had. Um, if you remember, uh, last um Halloween, we had a major storm event that came through the Merrimack Valley. It was very destructive. Uh, I think during that event alone, we might have, more of us experienced over a dozen downed trees in the entire city. Uh, we have probably around seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars in our operating budget to deal with some tree events. This particular event alone far exceeded that to the tune of two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Um, that particular event alone, we must have spent at least three weeks continuously, just cleaning up the brush, clearing the debris, clearing sidewalks, moving trees out of the way. It, it was a very, um, what's the term I'm looking for? Uh, unusual event in the sense that when we looked at the forecast the day before, we're expecting wind, wind storms or whatnot, we had our contractor on call, but I think the wind gusts, we were expecting anywhere between the fifty to sixty mile per hour range. The measurable speeds during that event uh exceeded ninety miles per hour, which caused much of the destruction that you saw. I think this particular event, I was actually in a meeting today with National Grid, is now actually the subject of a DPW investigation into the response to National Grid for this particular event. So, overall, I guess what I want to say, this money entirely dealt with just dealing with trees and the removals throughout the whole city. Um, if you remember, I also came before this council earlier this year, um, when this problem much more became apparent to, you know, ourselves, and I think a lot of your constituents about all the issues that we have with the trees in the city, um, that we want to try to be more proactive so they can avoid these type of events happening in the future. Uh, you know, we had residents in the city and areas of the city that had powers knocked down for probably three to four days. Uh, some of them had to do with utilities, but some of them also had to do with trees that were entangled in wires within the, the roadway. Uh, so our contractor was forced actually during a lot of different occasions to assist the National Grid contractor, uh, which also was very stretched very thin in clearing trees out of the way, so they could untangle the wires and get the power and service back up and running to the residents. So, um, that money that you see out there, again, was dedicated fully to dealing with that storm and all the aftermath. Uh, something I learned quite clear during the storm event is that tree work is not cheap. It is very expensive. Uh, I think I came before this council and explained to you, I think Council Payano was asking, well, how can we avoid this from happening? Uh, right now, we have one tree truck and one chipper that we use pretty much for minor um events, brushes that are anywhere between the diameter to four to six inches, but when you have trees that are probably twenty-four to thirty inches in diameter, obviously, at that point, it just becomes something above and beyond that we can handle internally in the department. Some of the trees, I think, um, in your district council, we had to take down by cranes. Um, there were particular trees that were split right down the middle, obviously, that were not down, but we could not just leave like that because at some, any point in time, the tree could have come down. So, you know, I think on average, what we're looking at right now, a full tree crew in the city, is anywhere between ten to twelve thousand dollars a day, uh, which represents pretty much the entirety of the cost that you see out there. There's some money within this, um, within this um particular account that was used for some minor sidewalk restoration, uh, pretty much in the areas where you had uppered trees. We wanted to make sure we didn't leave an open gaping hole, so we used some of that money to be able to patch up the sidewalks wherever those uh tree roots uh had been uprooted. Um, to the point that I think earlier this year, we're still cleaning some of the debris, um, still getting complaints from a lot of events that we had there. The second um emergency declaration that we had was um, heating system breakdown, um, pretty much with that amounted to it, if you remember as well, during the winter. We had a period of uh sub-zero temperatures for probably a period of about two weeks, where you had minus um ten and fifteen degree temperature consistently throughout the day and night. Uh, we had multiple issues through a lot of schools in the city, one of them being the San Lawrence East. Uh, we had a emergency fire sprinkler service that was on, uh, uninsulated, uh, became exposed to the atmosphere. At that point, the pipe just completely froze and just completely burst open. Um, you know, we had to have heaters out there for days to make sure that it didn't refreeze back again, and when the temperature was more amenable, we actually went back out there and repaired it, patched it up, and insulated it. Some of that money went to there. Um, another perfect example was the Tarbuck School. Uh, we had numerous pipe leaks within the foundation of the building. So, just for a little, you know, history relation, as you probably know, a lot of our schools are from the early eight, late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. Most of the heating systems back then were pressurized, uh, steam piping his, systems. Um, so we've been able to replace a lot of the boilers within those modus operandi. However, the, the, the heating system distribution remains the same as it was a hundred and fifty years ago. Um, a lot of it is encased in concrete, meaning you just can't simply get to the pipe and repair. You actually have to chip away the concrete, find the leak, repair it, and patch it up. And then when you do that, then another leak pops up. It was like trying to plug, trying to plug the hole. So, just in that event alone, we actually spent away forty-five thousand dollars. So, I don't think it's any surprise to any of you. Our bud, we budget very conservative in the DPW budget, in the operating budget. Whenever these unevented, uh, unexpected events happen, we unfortunately had to rely on additional funding. Uh, either that, or towards the end of the year, we'll be at a point where we simply don't have enough money. We have to come before you for free cash or an emergency authorizations. Um, so these, just in a sense, obviously, I can provide further breakdown if you want, in specific locations, how much it was spent, how many schools. Um, there was actually, City Hall was actually down for a few hours during one of these events, and we actually had to use some of that money for that as well. Um, so we can provide further breakdown if you wish, of specifically how much was spent per school, what we would have spent, and more further description if you like. Um, I hope that this doesn't become habit, to be quite honest with you. Um, but I can, you know, we cannot anticipate what the weather's gonna do. Uh, and this pretty much has a, weather events just have a very severe impact on our infrastructure and by default, on the operations of the department.
Thank you. I just have one comment. There was a DPW worker that came by on Green Hill Street to remove trees that were down in front of a house. I'm not sure when, probably, these storms weren't very helpful, but it probably caused some weakness to the trees. But anyways, thank you very much for uh, for responding uh today as, as, as was promised by DPW. These are the kinds of things, I think Mr. Abdi and Mr. DePena talked about constituent services. We get these calls all the time, and it's, it's important that when, when your department says someone's gonna be there in such and such a day, that somebody shows up, because if they don't show up, and suddenly we get a phone call, where are they? And it just, it just reinforces their, a negative image that they have of the city and city employees. So, yeah, you made a, your department made a commitment today and honored that commitment, and that's a positive thing and things to build on. So, thank you. I've got no questions on this or comments. Mr. Abdi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, uh, Mr. Hackus, you and I have talked about cleanup of the debris. Does this money satisfy what you think you're going to need to finish cleaning up the tree stumps throughout the city?
At this point, I would say we were probably about ninety-nine percent complete. Uh, I mean, we've, do have received in the past month or so complaints of, hey, this tree came down last October, you guys haven't come down, we just found out. So, I think as of the totality, we probably will not be using this money anymore. I think, uh, we will be focusing on using the half a million dollars moving forward that was approved by city council already, and using some of the operating budget. I mean, at this point, we've dealt with the emergency. Uh, we don't want this to be a recurring thing, so we'll probably be dealing with additional uh funds that have been approved through some other means, particularly the one the city council approved earlier this year.
Thank you, Mr. Hackus. So, what I will do is, considering we're at ninety-nine percent, I have two individuals' addresses. I will send them to you via email. Um, hopefully, get that, maybe they, they are last one percent. So, again, appreciate the work you do with the trees. I'm sure as my colleagues did. Um, I, Carltonville area certainly got slammed, and um, I know the DPW was down there for several days in the fall, and then again in March. So, much appreciated on behalf of the constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors.
Is there, is there a motion to send us up with a favorable recommendation?
Motion to send item two twenty-two to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Anything else, Mr. Hackus?
Thank you, councillors.
So much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chalas.
Thank you, Mr. Chalas.
Mr. Miguel hanging.
Chala, thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Miguel trying to hang out back there, hide behind Mr. Chalas.
Okay, we're back. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Abdi.
I'd like to make a motion to take the final item out of order. Two twenty-one.
Motion to take document two twenty-one out of order.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. No, two twenty was tabled. Two twenty-one. No, just two twenty. Uh, two twenty-one?
Twenty. No, just two twenty. So, last year, um, the city created four reserve funds, OPEP Trust Fund, Compensated Absences Reserve Fund, Workers Come, and In Your Own Duty Reserve Fund. And we funded each fund with a hundred thousand transfer from free cash. So, this year, we would like to transfer um the same amount of money, a hundred thousand, to each of the reserve funds.
Welcome to the black hole. Questions or comments, motions, Mr. Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you just tell us a little bit about a real hundred thousand foot synopsis of what those four counts are?
The account numbers, you mean?
No, the characterization. Well, there's four of them. Why are there four?
Oh, okay. So why is there four?
Total, a hundred thousand foot.
So I, we had not been funding our OPEP Trust, and it's an issue throughout the state and the country. So that was our first shot of funding that fund. So that's the OPEP Trust. Per Sean Cronin, our overseer, he recommended we also had other reserve funds. Compensated absences, that's for severance, so that we don't have those huge payouts at the end of the year, and then the department doesn't have the money to cover it. So that's what that fund is for. If you recall, in this year's budget, we did not have each department having a severance account. We decided to group it all in this compensated absences fund. Workers' Comp, claims reserve the same. We do not have each department funding their own workers' comp, so this is what this fund is for. So what we did was, for this budget, we had the monies transferred from each department to this fund. So this is additional funding for the fund. And injured on duties mainly for medical bills for police and fire.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Much appreciated.
Your motion? Your motion to send this up to the full council with a favorable recommendation?
So moved.
Motion's been made and it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, the ayes have it. So before you leave, let's just make sure we got each one of these, because we hopscotched around a little bit. Two sixteen, we did. Two twenty, we tabled. Two twenty-one, we just finished that one. Two twenty-two, two emergency declarations, that was the trees and the boiler.
Good show.
Two twenty-three was the snow.
And also, within two twenty-three is the two hundred and fifty-one, four hundred and forty transfer to chapter fifty-eight Reserve Fund for our capital, capital fund, GoFundMe.
That's right. We barely talked about that, but that's important, because we're going to be dealing with the CIP as early as next Wednesday. And that's going to be a component of the funding mechanisms to pay for these capital improvement projects. This is one of them. So that's, we'll hear more about that next week, right? Next Wednesday?
This is not part of the CIP.
Okay, totally wrong. Continue then, as I was.
Okay. So if you pull out the cover letter for document two twenty-three eighteen, the first part was the free cash transfer for snow and ice.
Yeah.
And the second part is the free cash transfer to chapter fifty-eight Capital Reserve Fund.
And just, and I guess as a preview of coming attractions, so the Capital Reserve Fund, despite its name, is not a source for capital improvement projects. It's not that. It's for?
Well, it's for capital reserve projects. We have CIP, and then we also have Pago Capital. This is the Pago Capital.
So it is. So I thought I was right then. So that does go toward paying for capital improvement projects. That's part of the Pago arm, if you will. There's two or three different places.
That's correct.
Bonding is one.
Exactly.
Pago is one. So, okay. Then I was right. Okay, thank you. So that's done. Two twenty-four is the revolving funds. We painfully went through that. And lastly was the two twenty-seven, the gang initiative. So I think we hit them all. Is there anything else tonight?
That's it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Abdu?
I would like to take a mo, make a motion to take one seventy-three sixteen off of the table.
Motion to take document one seventy-three sixteen off the table. It's been seconded, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Abdu.
If I may, I would request that you join me or consider joining me in withdrawing the item that you and I both co-sponsored two years ago, the examination of excise tax collection and the RMV. You know, recently, I, I worked with two constituents on this issue. And at the time, two years ago, I had, had issues myself, along with other constituents, with respect to the RMV and its billing practice, excuse me, the city and its billing practices and the relationship it has with the RMV, how it gets its data, how the mail is sent to our citizens vis a via third party, Kelly Ryan. And both in two thousand sixteen and two thousand eighteen, I've experienced issues within my constituency as well as myself. I want to give Ms. Oaks, who was here earlier this evening, credit. She has, at least with respect to me, I realize you are a co-sponsor, she has provided quite a bit of information. Whether I agree with parts of it or not, it's, irregardless, it's all factual. And I was satisfied. And I also would like to note the customer satisfaction she provided for at least two constituents. So with all that said, and I also spoke to Mr. Ionello, as I know you have, about this issue, and we've also had our public communications here in past meetings. I, for one, am satisfied with this item. I would be supportive of its withdrawal. However, I understand you are a co-sponsor, if you'd like to retain it.
And Mr. DePena as well. And I don't have a problem. I think that we got, from my perspective, Mike, Mike, and seeing the emails and, and.
Yeah. All due respect to Mr. DePena, I'm sorry.
So I have, I have no problems with a withdrawal motion on that. So if, if there is, so if you want to entertain that motion, offer it to withdraw, and we'll find out from Mr. DePena if he agrees with it and maybe he seconds it.
I will. I'll make a motion to withdraw item number one seventy-three sixteen, the examination of excise tax collection and the RMV.
Second. And motion's been seconded. So I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, the ayes have it. I think that's it. Oh, so just so, just so you're aware, can we take document one sixty-six eleven off of table items?
Make a motion to take one sixty-six eleven, the Gilmet School.
Thank you. Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, the ayes have it. So this is the Gilmet School, and, and this is, just, I wanted to bring you up to speed a little bit on this. I've had some communications with our attorney's office because I read the article in the local newspaper, but I never was briefed, I don't think the council's been briefed, on settlement provisions. This is dealing with Gilmet School and the lawsuit that the city had against one of the, the developers when mold was found at that school. So I just wanted to let you know that based on Ms. Sabalos, who's, who's left for the evening, that we received some monies as a settlement, and that dollar amount was one million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. That was a settlement. And then if, I'm going to read this out loud, and maybe it'll make some sense after I read it, because this is from Ms. Sabalos to Mr. Corrigan, Attorney Corrigan. I believe the only payment pending we have is the three-year note with Maroni for a total of twenty thousand dollars, or five hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-five dollars per month. We received three months. So only payments. I'm, I'm not, I feel like we are still doing outlays, and I'm not sure why that is. But here we go. Thank you. Let me read this into the record. Thank you. This is from, from Raquel Riano. Thank you. This will be brief. Per year, this is dealing with the Gilmet School. Per year across, this is from, to me, from Raquel Riano. Here is the further update on the Gilmet School litigation. There was a case that resulted from faulty work performed by various contractors during the construction of the Gilmet School back in two thousand. The city filed suit against several contractors back in two thousand twelve in Essex Superior Court. After six years of litigation, this case finally terminated earlier this year pursuant to a settlement agreement signed by all parties in March of two thousand eighteen. Copy of this agreement is retained by this office. The city agreed to settle with all the contractors for one million, six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. This amount was apportioned among the different contractors according to their involvement. All the monies due to the settlement agreement have been timely paid to the city of Lawrence, except those under the promissory note. One of the defendants, Maroni, has entered to a thirty-six month promissory note with the city of Lawrence for the remainder of the settlement proceeds, which will end up totaling twenty thousand dollars. So that explains this, what I was bringing up earlier. Of those thirty-six payments, the first three payments have been timely received. Remaining thirty-three payments should continue with their last payment under this note being in March twenty twenty-one. So there you go. So we are receiving one point six, almost one point seven, with twenty thousand of that, if I understand this correctly, coming over a three-month period, a three-year period, excuse me. What I don't remember, frankly, councilors, is the amount of money we put into this through, through outside counsel. And I guess if we wanted to count our own counsel as cost, I don't, I don't know if we are, whatever it is, we're done with the case. I'm just curious to find out where we stood. Did we lose money on this? Did we, did, did they, were able to make, made whole? I just don't know. So, did everybody get a copy of this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Very good. Thank you. So with that, do, do you think there's a need for any further discussion on this matter? Or is this something we want to send either withdraw and send to the full council?
Mr. Chair, do we want to wait till it's completely closed out? Because if we do send this to the full council, or actually, we could send it to the full council and it could sit there, correct?
It could sit there. I mean, the, the idea, we're thirty-three months away from this whole thing being around, and this is not even in our term. This will be another council term. Maybe the next, two council terms, depending on the map. Probably the end of the next council term. And I guess if somebody had a question on it, they could always take it back out again and say what's going on with the Gilmet School. I, for one, don't see a need to keep this around. We do have an explanation. I just have a question that I can get answered by making a phone call.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to withdraw this item.
Motion made. And second, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, the ayes have it. And I will discuss this with the full council just a little bit. I'm sure there may be some questions. And they may want to keep it up there, so we'll see. Is there anything else? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, no, the ayes have it.